Call the meeting to order, open with the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need some more chairs there, or are you okay?
I would like to thank everybody for coming to our meeting tonight. This is the December 7th, 2022, Meeting on Planning and Zoning Commission. If you address the commission later, we ask that you step forward and use the microphone up here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bob.
Here.
Mr. Burring.
Here.
Mr. Dougery.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Turek.
Here.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a forum present for all here. Moving on in the agenda, old business, we have none remaining from prior meetings.
Correct.
New business, and the first item on the agenda is Transportation Corridor Overlay District, Application TCOD 22002.
Of course, so the applicant here is PBL Investments, fellow senior, locations at 200 West Broad Street. Acres right now is about around 53.3 acres. It's currently split zone, GB general business and R10 high density residential. The applicant requesting approval of the Transportation Corridor Overlay District, pursuant to Section 12 P9.07, passing the code for the construction of retirement home, independent living villas, and associated site improvements. Take a look up here, the parcel outlined in yellow is the subject parcel. It's actually kind of split up into little different parts. You've got Heron Avenue here, cutting through part of it, Broad Street to the south, and John Rees. So again, it's about 53.3 acres and multiple parks. About 46 of that is frontage on Broad Street, south, Heron Avenue to the west, John Rees Parkway, east. About 2.815 acres on the west side of Heron Avenue, about 3.4 acres to the east of the frontage on John Rees Parkway and Richard County Street. Again, it's split zone GB R10, and also a large pension pond, credit points property. The disposal is for an assisted living facility with independent living villas and associated site amenities. Conditional use for this was approved November 8th of this year, but the zoning appeals, the use has been approved because of the TCOD, the planning and zoning commission is not considering a layout. Here's the proposed site layout here. You've got your assisted living facility, independent living villas, with Broad Street to the south, Heron Avenue over here to the west, and large open area here. Structure is the assisted living and memory care facility, about 75 units, is 66,000 square feet, two stories in height, about 126.505 feet from the edge of Broad Street, with 68 parking spaces included for ADA accessible ones. The independent living villas are the two-family attached style, 24 one-bedroom units with 37 two-bedroom units. Each unit has its own driveway onto the interior private road. Here's a look at the south part of the development here. In the assisted living facility, independent living villas will be one access to Heron, and a second on Broad here. There'll also be a clubhouse, about 3,000 square feet, 11 parking spots, and pickleball courts in the north of the development, space for six vehicles. Access will be a two-way entrance on Heron Avenue, and on the south, one entrance on the Broad Street. When this was shown, this was shown as a right-in, right-out when the conditional use is approved. However, it's unmarked on these plans, and all the roads inside of that will be private. And here, the northern development, so you've got your pickleball courts up here, surrounded by the independent living villas. Landscaping the frontage on Broad, there's some L2 along the south border of the parking lot. There wasn't any other landscape shown on the frontage, L2 required on the front for code. The front on Heron Avenue, if there wasn't any proposed, again, because the frontage L2 would be required there. On the west side, there was a mix of low shrub behind some of the patios, some shade and evergreen trees, for code, it's L3 or L4, being required there. I'll get into what the requirements are later in the review section. On the east side, there was no proposed landscaping, however, it's not abutting any residential uses, or isn't any required there. And to the rear, again, a mix of shade and evergreen trees behind the northernmost building, where L3 or L4 will be required by code. Signage will have one monument sign, the west entrance to Heron Avenue, one episode entrance to Broad, about five feet, five inches in height, 32 square feet. Did not know the illumination type of was shown in the plans there. So here, look at some of the elevations, you've got the main building here, so this would be your front entrance, backside of the building here, and this is a sample elevation of the independent living villas that was submitted. As part of our view, staff will offer the following comments. So we did draft a list of comments regarding the application, which is attached to your staff report there. Some of the more major items we'll touch on during the presentation. The proposed building height does exceed the maximum allowable GB only by about 413 seconds of an inch, but the plan is that the commission can approve that as proposed. They would need a variance to exceed 35 feet in height. The TCOD requires sidewalks and paths to be installed along the newly developed parcels on Broad Street, that can be foot wide asphalt path. There is a concrete path, but unknown width shown along the part of Broad Street, so that path would have to be asphalt, eight feet wide, and extended to meet the existing sidewalk on Heron Avenue. Following landscape standards are required in GB, front, L2, which is a continuous three-foot screen of shrubs or mound with one tree every 30 feet. Only the south border of the parking lot has L2, no other front screening was provided for the remainder of Broad or Heron. On the side, L3 or L4 is required at the buddy residential, L3 or L4. L3 is a six-foot continuous shrub line with one tree every 30 feet. You may use a fence or a wall instead of the shrubs. L4 is a six-foot fence with one tree per 30 feet, plus four high shrubs. So as proposed, there is minimal screening or shrub and some trees provided between the proposed development, Heron Manor to the west. The rear, L3 or L4, again, as proposed, some shade of evergreen trees provided behind the northernmost building. However, because this is a TCOD application, the Plan Zoning Commission does have the authority to approve landscaping as proposed. The front yard setback is supposed to be based off the recommended right-of-way width on Broad Street. That's 60 feet from the center line of the road. It appears it's based off the edge of the pavement right now on the plans, which is only about 15 feet off the center line. So the actual front setback would be less than what's shown on the plans there. And then we would just need some more information to be provided on the plans, just confirm that other aspects of the plan will meet the task of the code. So should this application be approved, the next step for them would be doing their construction plans, their engineering stuff with their stormwater calculations. That'll be approved administratively, and then construction will begin. Public Service Department left the following comments for stormwater control. We'll need the stormwater reports submitted to the construction plans. Some improvements may be needed to the existing pond and outlet structures, and then the existing pension pond currently on private property. Traffic, the access on Broad Street shall be right-in, right-out only. And then for the right-of-way, verify that the existing right-of-way is 60 feet from the center line, and if not, dedicate up to it. GPD, who is our subcontractor for traffic engineering, had the following comments on the traffic study. They did have some minor edit comments for the appendix of table contents. They recommended a westbound right-turn lane at Broad Street into, I should say, Heron Avenue. I apologize, not the right-in, right-out access drive. Traffic engineer wants a right-turn lane into Heron Avenue on Broad Street. The West-looking Joint Fire District had some general comments related to fire code compliance. Test the utilities of the project for the very large urban sanitary system. It's possible this concept will require an upgrade to the cement lift station, which will be funded by the developer. The water reclamation facility is also extremely limited on available capacity, and it's possible the project might be able to move forward due to lack of available capacity there. But we are in the process of getting that into budget, designing it, building it, to expand that facility to get the needing capacity for development. For the surrounding properties, to the north, you have R10, which is Heron Manor. To the east is GB and R10, which is currently vacant and then settled with Tascal. South is GB and F1, which is some miscellaneous commercial industrial uses on the south side of Broad Street. To the west is R10 and GB, which is Heron Manor and then vacant. So should the plan is any choose to approve, direct the applicant's request, following conditions may be considered. One, the applicant shall address all comments from playing and zoning staff, public service director, Tascal utilities, GPD, and the West-looking Joint Fire District. Two, the applicant shall submit the construction plans application within one year of the date of approval. Do you have any questions, if you have any?
Thank you, Jack. Just one clarification, I think it was maybe on the third slide, you made a reference to two-family, and some of the buildings are three or four, right?
Yeah, like the attached style, I suppose, was the reference there. But yeah, there would be some buildings with three or four units in one structure.
Okay. All right, questions for the staff? I'll start with them.
Uh-huh. The stormwater report. Well, I guess I can wait on that, this question. But I do have a question about the detached properties, the detached, the single-family, single... The buildings that are, like he just mentioned, the three-bedroom, are they three-bedroom?
They'll have one unit and two unit, one bedroom and two-bedroom units. But they'll be, in some cases, three or four of those units attached together.
Got it, okay. And these are strictly retirement community?
Yes.
No, single-family, they won't be able to have grandchildren going to school, any of that, or they can't?
I don't imagine that they would, maybe the applicant could attest to that.
It's, from our understanding, it's all part of the entire complex. So you have to, you can't, they couldn't go and put a rental out to say you can rent Villa Number Two. It has to be part of the whole facility, and people need to be part of the facility to live in the village.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Charlie. No questions. Brian?
No questions, thanks.
Jerry?
Just want to verify again, you know, so appeals already approved to change it from GB to... Is that correct?
So the zoning hasn't changed, it's still GB, but nursing homes are a conditional use in the GB district. You're going to go to more zoning appeals first, and then to decide whether or not use of that property as a nursing home would be appropriate, if they decide to get some.
Okay. And just to clarify, Scott, I understand that the main occupant has to be there, but they could or couldn't have grandchildren with them?
I don't know for sure, that would be a...
Okay, just wanted, I just wanted to verify that. The, getting to the sewage and that, just to get, you know, just kind of look at that glaring situation that's happening with the burden of sanitation and sewer. Will all that be corrected before construction, or when will all those studies be completed? And will, or will it be a burden to the people already living there with the sewage?
So they wouldn't be able to construct anything until that sewage capacity is available, which I believe, I don't know if it was approved in the budget.
So it got through the budget, so it's budgeted to expand the sewer plant. At this point, they're going through EPA regulations in order to get that expanded. Above my head, in terms of the scientific technicalities of it, but there's a 208 plan in place that the EPA, and I think the last time it was done, 2006. And that shows where within the county different folks concerned. So it shows the capacity, you get this area, water and sewer district, you get this area, Johnson, et cetera. So that goes through that, and it's regulated by the EPA. So right now, they're navigating the EPA process in order to get the upper grade approved. In order for them to install sewer lines for this project, you have to get a PTI, which is called permit, to install to the EPA. So they can go to EPA and say, we'd like to install this. But at this point, the EPA and our utility director will kind of nip that in the bud and say, we don't have capacity at this point, so we cannot approve your permit to install these. So there's checks and balances along the way. So all of the available capacities accounted for, so it won't, their goal and what they will not do is go through so that it's essentially overflowing, for lack of a better term. So folks in Heron Manor shouldn't see any issues with their sewer. It just won't get to that point with the checks and balances through the city and the EPA.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to construct until that point, so they're kind of getting things teed up for when that expansion is done.
Okay, and the last thing, again, on your, I think it was one of your first parts of the thing. We're only here to take a look at the layout, and to approve the layout and the property around, and make sure that, you know, the landscaping and everything?
Correct, you're looking at site layout, landscaping, like signage, marketing, stuff like that. But the use of property as a nursing home was already approved by the board of zoning.
And there's nothing we can do about that?
Correct.
No more questions at this moment?
Thank you, Stephanie?
So when they, when they put in there right-in, right-out, okay, from the two-lane Broad Street?
Yeah.
That was based on an actual traffic study, or that was just...?
That was the public service director's decision.
So, but none of the other, like, none of the other aspects of the, of it was taken into account? Because it wasn't an actual traffic study, that was just my, my main question. You know, it's two lanes, right-in, right-out, and independent living, you know, I'm assuming they can drive, so they would have cars, that, you know. So I was looking at the impact that would have on the two-lane road that's present with already heavy traffic, so.
Jack, if you can go to the kind of the site plan, so looking at this, they did submit a traffic. So looking at that location on Broad Street, at the southern portion, that is getting close to the intersection with Heron Avenue, so they did not put full access there. That means you can take a left out of there. The goal was to have all traffic come in through Heron Avenue and in this way. This way, you can come right in or right out, but you're not making any left-hand movements at this location. And that was based upon its proximity to this.
I see.
The main access will be through here, and that's where the right drop lane will come in to go up there. So if you're coming in, go to the right drop lane and then take a right in. So the majority of traffic was designed to go through this entrance.
I see, okay. I don't have any more questions.
I believe I saw in the report that that right-in, right-out would have a median, concrete median, I think you prefer to it as a pork chopper.
It's correct, yeah.
Okay. Frank?
Kind of just to add on to Jerry's, I know it was approved as conditional use for general business. You mentioned part of it was also residential, and the zoning there is fit within that use as well?
No, so the nursing home facility would not be permitted in R10, which is, I think you can kind of see the line up there, that lighter dash line. That's the zoning district boundary, so no part of this use can extend into that R10 boundary.
So this is all contained within that general business?
Yes.
Area, got it. And then, as far as the, the building height part of that, how would that, like, say we were to approve it tonight, would that go to Board of Zoning Appeals then, or how would that?
They would have to submit a variance request.
Okay.
And go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Got it, got it. And then what would be the next steps if it was approved? What would be the following steps after this?
So if this were to be approved, and they were to go get the variance for the building height, they would submit their construction plans application, which is all their site engineering. We'd take like a stormwater at that point, and once that's approved, they'll, they'll donate permission to build.
Okay. That's all I have.
And the, part of that process, of course, is the sewage capacity. I mean, that would be, okay. Okay, any follow-up questions for staff?
I do, I have one more. I guess I'll ask you now. The retention pond, it's currently on private property, but there's suggestion that that would need to be used, and that the taxpayer would be responsible, the city buying that retention pond after it's cleaned up by the developer, and then the taxpayer would be responsible to maintain it. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So the city wouldn't be buying it, it's already...
Deed, it would be deeded, sorry.
Yeah, this was, this was plotted years ago, and I think there was a development from the late 90s, early 2000s that showed something pretty different than what we're seeing today. So that was plotted, or has an easement over that retention pond that is, is actually the city's retention pond.
Oh, okay.
So that exists today.
Okay. All right, it says it doesn't show an owner, says it, what, it says on our paperwork that... It's on private property, no one, there's no specific entity that should have responsibility.
It is debatable, because it says the drainage unit or the retention pond to the city capacity, but it doesn't have any elaborating language in terms of any terms of limitations. So right now, there's Heron Manor, the settlement, a lot of folks use it. So in order to get control over this, because if there's an issue with that retention pond, and we say somebody needs to fix it, all these entities are going to look at each other. So to correct this problem for the future, the city says, we will take it. It is our easement, so instead of debating that, we will take it. We already have a pump station over there, so we'll take it once this is up and running in optimum condition.
So the developer would be responsible to get it up and running, or we are, the city?
The developer, as Alan mentioned in his comments, that it might need some additional work to make sure it's adequate to handle the stormwater going in part of this development.
By whom?
The developer.
The developer, so the developer would need to get it cleaned up and functioning, and then we would follow up with maintenance?
Correct.
And do we have... Is it, is it our responsibility to make sure that it's safe? Putting fences around it, any kind of safety protocol for animals, whatever, anything like that?
Or elderly.
Or elderly folks wandering, maybe.
Maybe these are built with a shelf in them, so it goes out before it starts to get deep. I don't know how this one was constructed, and if the time is accepted, that would go to the Public Service Department, and they would look at those provisions.
Okay, all right, that's all, thank you. Thank you.
Real quick. All right, you explained, you explained the process if it was approved. What would be the process if it's not approved?
It is essentially stopped here. So if this application is not approved, it stops here, and they would have to reapply if they want to.
Okay.
Question.
Brian?
So Scott, then, if, if we table it, though, then they can clean up some of these issues with you and Jack that need to be fixed, and then they can potentially come back next month?
That is correct.
Any other follow-ups for staff?
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
If not, we'll go next to the applicant, and I give them an opportunity to just make a presentation. I have two speaker request forms, I think they're probably the applicant, Jordan Peary, and Ryan, forgive me all, everybody tonight for mispronouncing, but Ryan Tibo?
Tibo.
Tibo, okay. First, we need to swear you in, Lisa will do that. And both of you are going to speak.
Do you swear in front of the testimony, the truth, the whole truth, the method of truth that you have? Should I introduce myself? My name is Ryan Tibo, I'm with Provision Living. We are the developer and will be owner-operator of the proposed project. If I could just take a couple minutes here to introduce Provision Living, and then we can talk specifically about the project, that'd be great. So Provision Living, we are a regional senior housing owner-operator based in St. Louis, Missouri. We've been in business since 2005, so we have, you know, over a decades' worth of experience in the senior housing industry. The primary function of our organization is as caretakers. You know, we want to provide a safe and secure environment for our senior residents to live in. Currently, we have a portfolio of communities throughout the Midwest. Included in that are two communities here in the state of Ohio, both of them down in the Cincinnati area. And as we look to expand further into the state of Ohio, we were really excited about the chance to come into the Columbus area, and specifically the city of Pataskala. It seems like a great, great area, and a place we're very excited to join and become part of the community with, with our project. We see that there is a tremendous need for senior housing in this city. There are currently no assisted living communities in the city of Pataskala. So we see that as a, as a need that we would like to fill with a high-quality product that we typically develop. So the final comment I'll make is that we really believe this is a more favorable use for this particular site. They have potential alternatives. So the, you know, the site is zoned, general business. We think a lower-intensity use such as ours would be better suited for this particular location, given the proximity to the residential homes, Heron Manor, just behind us. And the primary reason for that is that senior housing really is an ideal transitional use between residential and commercial developments. So where we have, you know, the residential developments, Heron Manor right there, and the potential commercial developments on the other side of the site. Senior housing, you know, being a residential community in nature, it is also a place of employment, where our caretakers come to care for our residents each day. So it's really an ideal transitional use. And, you know, we believe a better use than potential higher-intensity alternatives that are permitted under the general business district. So that's the final comment I wanted to make. I know there are a lot of comments on our site plan, and I was going to maybe look to you guys for a little direction on how best to address those, or if we want to go through those one by one. Or anything we should go through.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great. Questions for the applicant? Charlie, start with you this time?
City out of St. Louis, Missouri. The Columbus, where your initial, initial plan was to hit the Columbus market versus Pataskala market, was that the initial plan?
Yeah, so typically, whenever, you know, we do our research, we just start with a major metropolitan area. There's a, there was a lot of recent senior housing development activity in some of the other places we had identified. And we were very surprised to see a city like Pataskala, as great as it is, that there wasn't any senior housing development in the area. So that was something we thought we could come in and, again, meet the need for, for a high-quality community in the area.
What kind of ratio numbers that you can verify or show us? Percentages in regards of people living in the homes, the senior homes, and like your reviews, so to speak? Can you elaborate on some of the potentials of what you have done in the past with other cities?
Sorry, I'm a little confused ratios.
Ratio in a sense of percentage-wise? How many people are in the homes that have remained, great ratings, reviews, so to speak?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you actually search up some of our communities, the Google reviews are quite excellent. And we receive feedback primarily from families whose parents or family members live there, that they're very pleased with, you know, the care that we provide. You know, we're a very responsive organization, so if people come to us with issues, we're typically very quick to address those and address any concerns anyone might have. Does that answer the question that you're?
Yes, heading in the right direction, yes. Okay. Lisa, go back around, thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
No question.
Thanks.
Jerry? Couple of questions. First of all, thank you for coming, I appreciate that. The commercial site, explain to me a little bit more about the commercial site, what you're talking about with that vacant space.
Yeah, so the, a couple of things here. So, one, I'll make a comment about the bottom left, the, yes, southwestern portion of the site. So actually, on the other side of Heron, that, so the seller of the site owns all 50-something acres. We are only purchasing the 10 acres that compromise our exact site plan. So the seller is reserving that empty space for potential commercial retail development, as well as the real estate on the west side of Heron. And then further east of our site, over there, that is also commercial space that we are not developing. We are splitting this apart from the parcel 10 acres for our own development. The seller will retain the other acreage.
Okay, so the seller's retaining that?
Correct.
So you're only taking the, the parcel that is, is in the plan, right?
That is correct, yes. It has not been split apart yet, but it will be.
Okay, so you're not planning on expanding into the other portions?
At the moment, no.
Okay. Okay. Kind of explain to me a little bit about the assisted living. Tell me what, you know, what the whole process is, what's your?
Sure. So, yeah, I'll give you an explanation of the entire care model that we provide. So independent living being the lowest care, it's effectively individuals that want to move out of their single-family homes and into a community with, like, individuals. So for the independent living villas, there is not care provided. However, they do have access to the amenities in the community. The actual community itself, the assisted living, there's part assisted living, part memory care. There is a dedicated neighborhood in the community for individuals with Alzheimer's or dementia, which we typically refer to as memory care. So that is part of the community, individuals with Alzheimer's, dementia. That is a secure wing, you know, only accessed by families and employees. And then the assisted living mostly is sought out by people, again, who want to sometimes widowers, people that live alone, oftentimes we'll get couples in the communities. It's people that, they're looking to, again, move into a place with, like, individuals, somewhere that can offer assistance with activities of daily living, things like getting dressed, meal preparation, showers, medication management, if they need it. That's typically the higher end of the care that is offered in the assisted living. And the lower end would be, you know, assistance with a couple of things, maybe getting dressed, or, you know, we offer three meals a day in our communities. Really, they come to the community for the socialization and to be around people like themselves.
Thank you, and I mean, obviously, we're here to discuss the plan and the, the landscaping and things like that, but the one question was brought up about, so let's say you have someone with memory loss. Can another family member that might have children also live in the same facility?
They cannot, no.
Okay.
This is age-restricted, so the building licensed by the state of Ohio as a residential care facility, RCF. Only individuals 55 and older is the age restriction, but people that meet the requirements of, you know, needs for care can live there. Individuals younger than that cannot. Same with the villas. The villas are not licensed, they will be age-restricted. Grandchildren, people under the age of 55, non-relatives cannot live in the independent living villas either.
Great. Thank you very much for answering that. The last thing I had, I'm done, I promise. The last thing I have is the 35, exceeding the 35 feet. What's exceeding that, and is there any way to not exceed that?
Yeah, so I think with four feet and a couple inches was exceeding that, and really, that's just the, yeah, we have a template that we work from, that we don't use the same building at all of our communities, we have a general structure that we use. And what we thought was optimal for the site was the two-story building that we often use, and I think it's the pitch of the roof that kind of exceeds the, the height there. Bringing the height down, I'm not sure, Jordan, is that?
You could, but it's only four, it's not four inches.
Four, yeah. Not, not much. So we would be requesting a variance for the height for the four feet, or whatever it is, but it's very similar to a typical two-story, single-family residential home.
Again, thank you for coming, thank you very much.
Thank you for your questions.
That's all I got, sir.
Thank you. Stephanie?
So I don't have really any question, well, I have one question, but in reviewing the staff report, you know, it looks like you've got some substantial issues, in roadblocks, potentially, right? But again, if you're asking for suggestions, obviously, aside from those large issues, you know, you're surrounded by residential, and so I would suggest maybe putting something in there about more shrubbery, more boundaries. You know, my thought comes in where assisted living, you're going to have a lot more, you know, maybe ambulance lights, you know, things that happen that may have a negative impact on, on the residential neighbors you have. So I would consider whether that's a wall, whether it was some shrubs, you know, whatever, all the way around. And that was just a suggestion for you. And the other thing that I'm wondering is, you know, you're surrounded by, so you do have a potential of commercial that's right beside you, right? So anything could go in there, and I want, I want to know if you actually considered, what if they put, you know, something loud beside it? Or, I mean, is that something that you normally would consider when you're building somewhere? Because you're right beside another commercial property that, right?
Yep.
That anything could go in?
Correct. So part of our contract with the seller is that we have the option to purchase additional land for them, so that we don't have it under contract, the additional land, we have an option to. And the primary desire for us to do that would be able to control what goes there, so that it's not a big, loud, noisy, commercial development. Of course, we can't always control that if the seller wants to take it to someone else, but of course, you know, taking that into consideration.
If you have the option to purchase it, you know, you're obviously a company, so would you purchase it to expand what you have?
If the need in the market showed.
All right.
Yep, definitely.
You can go ahead.
Thank you.
As, as far as like timeline, you know, there's obviously some challenges with the, with the sewer and things like that. What, what are you kind of envisioning here for this were to be approved?
Yeah, so the first step, obviously, is coming here tonight and talking to you guys. The next step in the process, as you guys had identified, was working with various utility departments to be sure that, you know, we can get the capacity or we're not overflowing it. So we had talked about some different estimates for timelines, a couple months, something like that. Does that sound appropriate for moving through utilities? But obviously, we can't start construction until those are approved. So we would move through whatever necessary requirements are asked of us, and I think we would start those pretty soon after, if we were to receive approval tonight, we would try to get the process started as quickly as possible.
So do you have like an estimate as far as when you, when you think construction, or when you're hoping to start construction?
So if it was, say, six months from tonight, that would be most ideal. Of course, that might not be, that may not happen, but it would be, yeah, our goal would be to start construction as soon as we could, given the permits that we received.
And if you ran into delays, you know, that lasted two years or something like that, I don't know, I'm not sure what, how long that would take, would that be an obstacle for you guys as far as being able to financially do this project?
Yeah, so that's actually something we are coming to terms with as it stands today, given the environment for interest rates, bank lending, and stuff like that. So that is something internally as an organization, we're working on, preparing for the possibility that we may not be able to start construction on this project or others for a year or two. So that is something we are exploring, and something, you know, if that obstacle does hit us, we would still like to continue pursuing and keep things like this afloat and alive.
Good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I think all of my questions have been answered through their questions. I have a question for Scott, or Jack, again. So we're looking at the treatment facility to be a year, two, three, I mean, we have the funding. How long will it take to get that, do they expect, up and running?
To my knowledge, it's unknown as they navigate through the EPA process. Right now, capacity is available. It is available, but the utility department is viewing it as a first come, first served. Essentially, from what I understand, I don't want to speak to the utility department, should this go in, that essentially speaks for all of the available capacity in the city, all that's been accounted for. So no one can preserve rights, but that would, that would take the remaining capacity, until such time as the water treatment facility could be upgraded.
So it says this, it is possible that this concept will require an upgrade to the settlement lift station, which will be funded by the developer. So, and there is a lack of available capacity at the water reclamation facility. So, I don't know, leaves a lot to be desired, looking like, to me. But who knows? It could happen. So there is a lot missing, there's a lot that needs, I, I don't even, we don't even have time to discuss everything that's mentioned. So I don't think we want to go by bullet point.
Sure.
Personally, speak for myself, I guess.
If I can make just one comment.
Sure.
So for all the comments that have been made, we are agreeable to effectively all of them. I think we just want a little clarification on one or two. Really, the only variance that we'll be asking for is the height of the building. We will not be asking for a variance for the landscaping plan. You know, we intend to meet, one, the requirements of the landscaping plan, and two, exactly as you guys had mentioned, provide enough of a barrier between our development and the surrounding residential development. So planting shrubs and trees to act as a barrier between the two. So we intend to meet each of the comments that have been provided throughout the process. Really, the only variance that we're asking for is the height of the building.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions for the applicant?
I got a couple of follow-ups.
Sure.
And one is for staff. In terms of landscaping, if we want different landscaping and that, we kind of have to settle that tonight, or what, because, you know, to make sure that we have proper buffering around the property? That all has to be discussed tonight and put in as a conditional use or conditions, correct or incorrect?
So with the, the applicant has said, we'll meet all the requirements of the code. So at this point, we would go through and say, L2 is here, L3 is here, and we would go strictly by the code and say, oh, that has to be put in. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be a condition of approval. You could make it a condition of approval, that they meet all landscape requirements of the code. of the code. But in our review, based upon the applicant's testimony, we would go through and say, everything needs to be brought up to exactly how code is.
Are we allowed on this particular property to demand to be higher than code or are we only allowed to go to code since it's not been approved yet as, as that use? They're asking for variances.
They'd be asking for the variance of four inches for the height that would come to warp zone if you. You could request that landscaping be increased in certain areas, but then there's kind of a gray line in terms of what's appropriate and what's not.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I will make one suggestion on the right-in, right-outs. Make them bigger so that they can't go left. You know, we have right-in, right-outs, but they're not big enough, so people still decide they're going left when they want to go left. If you make that porch chop, that bone a little bit longer, they got to do a complete 180 to go left, and it restricts people from cutting into Broad Street with that right-in, right-out. So that's a huge suggestion if this passes. Make sure that right-in, right-out is big enough to keep people, deterring people from wanting to turn left. Because in the right-in, right-outs that we have in some of the places in the city, people still find a way to turn left.
I think that's something we would want to for the safety of our residents.
Exactly, exactly. The last thing, I'll make this comment with the commercial property, we only have so much commercial property available in terms of retail. And Broad Street and 13, or Broad Street and 310 are really our only two. So I hate to see any more commercial property get dissolved into, as much as I know there's a need for assisted living, my personal view is I hate to see any more of our availability where we can get taxes and things like that and we're not draining from our sewage and our water, is if you keep growing there, then that puts a big tax on the city. Where if it's commercial property, we're actually getting taxes from where, what people are buying inside those stores, so.
Totally understand.
Just my personal opinion on that. Other than that, I have no others, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So just to recap, you said you were willing to meet all the code requirements, the items that are called out in the staff report.
That is correct.
And as well as the turn lane, or the right-in, right-out, I mean, sorry. The, another question, I guess we can cover this during our deliberation, but the, are there any concerns about setbacks?
I do.
You do?
The question about the center line, the 60 feet off center line, so the current plan is 15 feet off center line, it looks like?
Yes, that's what it looks like.
And so how much would that change the plan if they actually have, give us a plan? Because the plan we're looking at is not accurate, correct? So it would have to be moved back further, correct?
If they could, they could also just propose that to have a shorter front setback. I think it's like 126 feet right now, and it's supposed to be at 60 feet off center line instead of 15, they just take the difference off of what the proposed front setback is.
Okay.
And legally.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Stand by, we might have a follow-up as we discuss it a little bit more.
Thank you.
So deliberation time? Thoughts on the application?
I think, I think there are too many issues, and I think we could either table it or or stop passing. I mean, we've, there's a lot of problems with this, I think. And because once we pass this, it's done.
Right.
I'm not comfortable doing it. I mean, that's just my, my take on it, so.
Do you see any issues that were not listed on the staff report that need to be addressed? And that's something that, kind of a general question for all of us, but.
I think it's been covered pretty thoroughly in the staff report, and there was already enough, you know, inconsistencies or things that need to be corrected, center line, you know, the landscaping should be more, or discuss whether that's going to be, and yeah, you could put it to code, if you're putting a small shrub in there as opposed to a wall, but you, those things really need to be defined. And since this is the last time we're going to be seeing this, or having anything to do with it, I think it's important that we either make the right decision whether that's tabling this, and we can come back with an absolutely better plan than what I'm seeing, or we just don't pass it.
Okay. Thanks. Other thoughts? Questions?
I'm inclined to lean that way as well, to table it, to get a cleaner application that can be presented so that we're not overwhelmed with setbacks, making sure that what we're approving is, I don't know, it's just, it's a lot. It's a lot. So I mean, there are a few times that we get these applications that there is so much that needs to be adjusted. I know they're willing to do all of it, but I'd like to see it presented. That's my opinion, that's all.
I don't feel right sending anything to city council that's half-done, and I feel like there's, it's incomplete. And I appreciate the direction that the developer is going, but, you know, I just, I want to see a complete report before I say yes or no. And then if I say yes, and we all say yes, then goes to city council. I just don't feel like it's right to send something incomplete up to them.
Is this one going to council?
No.
So this is purely us. Sorry, Brian, I just wanted to verify that when I heard that. I just wanted to verify. You know, I, I personally feel we can go two ways. One, we can just make a decision on it tonight, or we can ask the applicant if, you know, tabling is an option. That's my question. Or we can just go ahead and make the motion and make a decision. Because they did bring it here very incomplete.
Is this the first time this application's come up, I believe?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, that's pretty common, you'll have some missing information, I would say. Yeah, I'm kind of with Jerry, I could, I could either, I'd like to have a little more clarity on this, but I could, I could vote on it as well. I think, obviously, the sanitary sewer is a big issue, but I don't know that that necessarily gets addressed through this meeting here. So, yeah, I could go either way.
So I guess the question is, do we want to make a decision or do we want to ask the applicant if they want to table?
If they will on the table, that would be ideal, because that was my question, you know, what happens next if we don't approve? It ends here, if we don't approve it. So is it something we want in the city of Potash? And if it's not, then we don't approve it. We run it down, we table it, and vote again.
And we'll find that out if we make a motion.
Right.
Question for staff, if this, if we were to table, what, what would be your plan for the next month? What action do you have?
We would essentially, when the revised plans come in based on comments, the deadline for the January meeting is Friday. So in the interim, we have to come in, we go through a normal, normal process of reviewing it and sending it back out and everything to have it ready for planning commission. Aren't really in January if nothing.
Good. Any other discussion?
I mean, just one more thing I'll throw out is, you know, I think even with, I don't feel quite as bad tabling it, just the fact that we do, we're going to have delays with the construction anyhow with the, with the stormwater part of it, so.
I think we're okay to ask, I mean, I think we need to ask the applicant if he wants to table.
Okay.
I think that's where we're at as, as a committee, are we agreeing with that? Or do we want to put it for both? Okay, well, that's gonna be.
I'd like to make a recommendation to table.
Go to it.
So, obviously, if we table it, there's going to be time. So you have the right to either say, yes, you would like for us to table it, and then we'll discuss it, and, or you have the right to say, no, you want it to go to a vote.
Yeah, we would definitely appreciate the opportunity to table it and further ameliorate some of your concerns. I doubt we would make the Friday submission, so I think February would likely be a target date for, you know, we'd submit in January, target February for the next meeting. But yes, definitely, we would, we would be open to that and happy to do it.
And I would suggest that you make sure it's as clean as possible when it comes across the, the next time.
Understood.
Okay. Yeah? Like to make a motion to table?
Second motion.
First, Anna's move that we table the applications, Stephanie I believe seconded. Any discussion on the motion to table? Rule calls.
Mr. Carrery.
Yes.
Mr. Stockerty.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Scherex.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Carrery.
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Carrery.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes. The motion passes. On that, do you expect that next month, or do, did they indicate?
They're planning on dropping the plan, the revised plan is on Friday, so they shouldn't be changing that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item C under new business plan, development district application, ZON 22006.
Of course, the applicant here is Redwood, USA, location at 6197 Main Street. Current acres is about 46.9, currently zoned agricultural in R20. The request is a recommendation of approval for rezoning from AG Agricultural in R20 to PBD Plant Development District and approval of clunery plan pursuant to section 145.19 attached to code for a 231 unit multi-family development. So the data looked up here, two parcels outlined in yellow, the subject parcel, we have one fronting on Main Street here, and then one behind it that's currently zoned R20. The only frontage here is on Main Street to the west. It's currently used for agricultural purposes, there is the perimeter of its tree line, and there is a creek that runs midway through the property southwest to the northeast with some wetlands. The second parcel is about 11.89 acres, currently zoned R20, does not have frontage on any public right-of-way, it's currently undeveloped and mostly forested, there's a lot of wetlands along the east border. So the proposal is the applicant seeking recommendation of approval from the planning zoning commission to resent both these properties from AG R20, Plant Development District, approval of clunery plan, or rather, attached to Main Street. Here's a conceptual plan that the applicant submitted showing the proposed development, which has got Main Street off to the west here. Site statistics, so the site area, again, about 46.9 acres, proposed units is 231, and the density of 4.9 units per acre. Open space is at about 16.65 acres, or 35.5% of the site area. The wetlands is 5.29 acres total, 0.19 acres of that is proposed to be mitigated and removed, 5.1 acres is to remain with 25 foot bump around the perimeter of the wetlands. Here's a, a look at the site plan here. Main Street to the west, a lot of wetlands over here to the east that are remaining in preservation zone, some wetlands through here with a creek that'll have a 25 foot bump around it. Setbacks, so the front, Main Street, they'll have 50 feet on the north and south sides, proposed at 20 feet, and the rear is 25 feet towards the east. Access and parking, they're proposing two full access points on Main Street southwest at the north and south ends of the frontage. Development to be served by a private interior roadway, 22 feet in width, with a four-foot sidewalk on one side of the street. Each unit will have its own private driveway and parking for two vehicles and two, and a two-vehicle garage. Also be 47 guest parking spaces distributed throughout the development. Here's a look at the, a view of the north entrance here, they got their signs, landscaping here, the turn hand, you got the units, each unit will have a tree in the front yard. And then here's a look at the south secondary entrance, so same deal, all units will have trees here, the front yard, and an extra sign down here. For landscaping and screening, L2, which is the three-foot shrub, one tree every 30 feet, both along the frontage of Main Street, steps within the AP transmission easement, because AP simply can't do anything in there. Deciduous trees in front yards is for the multifamily buildings, unknown number of those provided shade evergreen trees as a perimeter buffer for the north side yards. North, that's behind buildings ABC, LL, KK, JJ. South, behind the buildings NA, AB, CD, CD. They'll retain the existing forest area around the wetlands to the east as a preservation zone. So again, here's just a look at their landscaping plans, this would be the west side of the development, the proposed first phase. You can see some buffering here along, behind the buildings, along the side yards, and then trees in the, will be the front yards essentially of these units. And kind of the same deal continuing on into phase two, with these wetland areas remaining in a preservation zone. And then each, each to have one central man box location to the north building G, and the trash and refuse disposal will be handled by individual cans provided to each unit. So here's a look at some of the elevations that were provided to us, the ones over here would be the ones that face, the site faces towards Main Street, and this would be the view from the interior of the development. So as part of our view, planning zoning would offer the following comments, this is in Brad because part of the event set forth, so it's just this little word here, the future land use map recommends two, the two properties as medium-density mixed use. Comprehensive plan describes this as having recommended development intensity of five to 10 units per acre. With E test or attached single-family, multifamily, retail, or office uses, proposed plant development district will be aligned with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan. Full list of staff comments is attached to your staff report. A lot of these comments require more information for us to make determination on whether or not, any code or if it needs something else. Some of the major items are development text, it's going to need a lot of work in order to be comprehensive enough document to bring it before council. Again, since this is a plant development district, that development text becomes a zoning code that governs the entire district, including necessary requests of divergences on the plan and in a separate section of development text as proposed. There's at least two we identified, potentially more once more information is provided. There's a 25-foot wetland buffer that's mentioned but not shown on the plans, and the street names have to be proposed at this point. They just listed the street, AC, and so, but we'll need the actual street names at this point. Again, as this is a rezoning, planning zoning commission will recommend approval or disapproval to city council, to have a final decision, yet ultimately return to planning zoning commission for a final plan if it's approved, then prior to construction. The RM district would require, they are just going to do a straight multifamily zoning, L3 or L4 along the side rear yards, again, L3 being the six-foot high shrub or fence with a tree, L4 being a six-foot high fence with a tree every 30 feet, four high shrubs for 30 feet. So since this is a plant development district, the applicant can propose their own landscaping standards, but subject to commission's approval from ultimately city councils. As proposed, the rear and side yards screening is a mix of existing trees with additional shade evergreen trees behind the structures. Public service department has the following comments, for stormwater control, the retention plot layout appears to work, they'll just need to, or they want the look at the applicant, know that the site drains headwaters that have low capacity and it drains heavy rains here, it's not very well, so make sure to take that into account when you do the construction plans. to city council, city have a final decision. Yet, we'll need to return to planning zoning commission for a final plan if it's approved and then prior to construction. The RM district would require, they are just going to do a straight multifamily zoning, L3 or L4 along the side rear yards. Again, L3 being the six-foot high shrub or fence with a tree, L4 being a six-foot high fence with a tree every 30 feet, four high shrubs 30 feet. So since this is a planned development district, the applicant can propose their own landscaping standards but subject to commission's approval from ultimately city councils. As proposed, rear and side yards screening is a mix of existing trees with additional shade evergreen trees behind the structures. Public Service Department has the following comments for stormwater control. The retention pond layout appears to work, they'll just need to, although they wanted to let the applicant know that the site drains to headwaters that have low capacity and it drink heavy rains here, it's not very well, so they should take that into account when they do the construction plans. Stormwater port would be needed when they submit for the construction plans. Stormwater will all be handled through the engineering phase of development if this gets approved. Traffic left turn lane should be constructed at the north entrance into development and verify that all interior streets are to be and remain private. And then for the right of way, verify that proposed right of way is 45 feet from the existing center line of the road. GPD, who is our subcontractor for traffic engineering review, stated that the trip generation numbers seem to be low by approximately 20%. They wanted to recheck their generation numbers and reevaluate the potential scenario for a left turn lane coming into development from the north. They compared with city's previous citywide intersection capacity and safety study, seems to be no negative impacts caused by the new development there. Southwest looking stated that capacity is not reserved until such time that requirements for the tap permanent have been fulfilled, low evaluated, and fees paid, kind of in the same situation the city is right now with their sewer capacity. Fire department just had a bunch of general comments relating to fire code compliance for locations of hydrants and no parking on one side of the street. The, for the local schools, Redwood did meet with superintendent and treasurer of Looking Heights. The superintendent provided the applicant with letter that they included in their application. They're saying that from data from similar projects, the project may result in 14 to 18 additional students for the district. Not receiving any of their comments from anybody else. Stranding properties to the north is zoned agricultural R20, which is the single-family homes and some more undeveloped forested land. To the east is R20, which is single-family homes. To the south, you have agricultural R20, where there's more single-family homes, and across the street on the west are 87, which are against more single-family homes. So should the planning zoning commission choose to approve? The applicant's request, following conditions may be considered. One, the applicant shall provide a complete copy of the complete application to the planning zoning permits prior to proceeding to city council. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Jack. Questions for staff, we'll start with Brian.
So Jack, I was looking at the traffic implications here, and it says that typically there's an ITE trip generation manual used, and so did they use a secondary system then to generate that?
No, I believe they used an incorrect amount of units when they calculated it.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Jerry.
Jack, I have one question for you. First of all, the, you said that there at the end, you said five to 10 units per acre. What does this consist of per acre right now?
4.9.
4.9, so it is that, perfect. Second of all, and this might bring Scott into also, if, say we got farther along, we want to discuss landscaping, we can, again, since this is going from agricultural to PDD, we can discuss putting more buffering in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so like if we decided on the road frontage should have more so that we're not looking right at apartments, we could say we'd like to have mounds and shrubbery so we're not looking at the apartments, the apartments are more farther back behind?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And again, that's just if we got to that point, just wanted to know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, so again, I think I'm going to go back to that with the, with the traffic study, and it said, you know, like a low impact or whatever it was, but you said that they may have used the wrong number of units is how it.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe they used the incorrect amount of units when they were calculating
it, but I believe the traffic engineers' comments were relating to intersection safety traffic study that the city did a couple of years ago.
Right.
And based on that, there shouldn't be necessarily an impact just on intersection safety.
So going in and out of this development, it's going to be coming off of Mink or Broad or?
It would be just off Main Street.
Okay, so with that, so it's 234 units, right?
31.
231, okay. So again, if we're going by the average of a two-car household, you're still looking at around 460 new, you know, more cars on a two-lane country road going in and out. So to me, that, that is a negative impact, right? And, and, you know, I do have some concerns because I'm looking at this and it's saying, you know, from, from the water and sewer district, and it says specifically, the district has concluded that the sanitary sewer infrastructure within the drainage tributary are insufficient to serve this project as proposed, right? I know that you guys said that you were designing, is that going to be part of the one that you are building?
This is the water and sewer district, so they're in a similar situation as the city. So I think they're a little bit further along, they plan to have it up and running by 2025. The city's still figuring a timeframe out.
Okay, and the other thing was, as far as the drainage, that, you know, it's stated in the report that the property already does not drain properly, it will flood. So they, I mean, the retention pond or the retention, or the drainage there's now is not adequate, so they would have to do over-retention, is that correct?
It is possible, they may have to over-retain the ponds to make them bigger to handle it due to the drainage patterns, but that can't be determined until the stormwater calculations are submitted with the construction plan application.
Okay.
That's the step of the review.
And so for all intents and purposes, for what we're handed, because, you know, obviously not an impact on the school or anything because they were looking at, what, 14 to 18 additional students because the community is geared toward retired individuals, young, you know, types. So I don't have a concern there, but right now, for the intent of today's meeting is for us to decide whether or not we're going to rezone this from agricultural to residential. And to me, I mean, we have a lot of potential issues if you're trying to turn this into a residential type of thing, whether that's water, sewer, traffic, like all of that, right? Okay, I just want to make sure. That's all I have.
That's correct.
I think you guys covered a lot of the things there. So wetlands are, you know, and all the drainage there, there's no way we can have any insight into what they would do on that until the general zoning would be changed, that weren't incorrectly.
Yeah, essentially, they do the stormwater calculation, so right now they look and say, like Alan, Public Service Director says, where you have them should work, you may need to over-retain, but I can't make a for sure call on that until I have the data. So essentially, at this point, he looks and says, that should work, and the next step is prove to me it will work.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a concern there. Yeah, and you covered, you know, the traffic studies, and the units per acre, I mean, there's quite a bit of wetlands and I think there's like a stream or something going through kind of the middle of property. I'm assuming that units per acre is divided across the whole property, including all that, is that correct?
That is correct.
I think that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Thanks. Ann?
Thank you. Under conditionally permitted uses in the ag district, can you read, can you tell me what Section 1215.05 says?
1215.
Because I don't have it in front of me.
1215.05?
1215 would be?
Conditional use section.
Yeah. Are you looking for a specific conditional use in ag or just conditional uses in general?
The standards found in Section 1215.0.
That would be for a conditional use. And conditional uses go into BZA. So that would not be applicable to this application.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Charlie?
I'm good, thank you. Yeah, no questions.
All right. Just to clarify too, the development text, this being a zoning application, development text has to be in the, whatever we would approve, it has to be what we want council to see. They can't, we can't approve something and say, you know, on a condition that they're going to change this. It has to be, what we see has to be what council, what we want council to see.
Essentially, it has to be council-ready. If there's a misspelling, a typo, disnumbered this, that's fine, that's what we need when it's a clean copy. We can't put conditions like we do in other things where you will address all comments. Essentially, the text in the plan has to be council-ready.
Okay. Any follow-ups for staff before we bring up the applicant?
Do we have one extra applicant?
So it's now, we ask the applicant to step forward and be sworn in, and then you can make a presentation.
Hey, Will, I could send you some stuff that you guys wanted to present.
Good evening, my name is Will Share, I'm Acquisition Operations Manager at Redwood. Joining me is Todd Foley with Pod Design and Bob Dyer, both been working alongside me on this neighborhood that we're really excited about here in Tascala. So you may be familiar with us from our existing neighborhood here in the city, but just a quick intro into Redwood, we do one thing, one thing only, build single-story, low-density, market-rate apartment neighborhoods. We were founded in 1991, we now have over 15,000 dwellings, with 2,000 being in central Ohio alone. We're proud to be able to say we have a 98% lease portfolio and that we have never sold anything that we have ever built. I think this makes Redwood unique from a lot of other developers. Often times will come into a municipality, build their project, sell it off to a management company and kind of wipe their hands and be done with it. That's not Redwood's business model, we are invested into the communities that we're in for the long term. So where do we build? You see lists here where we're located in central Ohio. Our Tascala neighborhood has 117 dwellings. It is currently 96% leased. So what do we build? All of our dwellings offer two bedrooms, two bathrooms, with a two-car private attached garage. They are all single-story, they're fully ADA and FHA compliant, they have no steps and zero clearance thresholds. We also offer extensive landscaping and upgraded architectures. All of our streets are private, as Jack mentioned, that we maintain, we do not allow on-street parking in our neighborhoods. Who lives here? Redwood's very popular with empty nesters and seniors, that's our largest demographic, as well as young professionals. Our residents are those who are, choose to rent, and there are those who can afford rents between 1,800 and 2,200. All of our residents or applicants require to pass through a series of background and credit checks. We really want to provide a peace and quiet in our neighborhoods, so having these checks in place helps us to create that kind of environment. This is a little bit of data that's gathered from our 15,000 dwelling portfolio. The average age of a Redwood resident is 51 and a half years old. We've found that a large portion of our residents are relocating from within a three to five mile radius, so oftentimes they may already be your neighbors, they're members of the community, integrated into local businesses. They oftentimes choose to live at a Redwood because we provide a high-quality housing option, allows them to age in place and remain a part of the community that they're already invested in. Our residents typically stay longer in our neighborhoods. On average, our residents stay more than double what the industry average term is. Our standard lease term's 15 months, we do offer longer lease terms up to 24 months as well. So the site we're talking about today is 40, as Jack mentioned, 47-acre site on vacant land, currently zoned agricultural and medium-density residential. We believe that Redwood's a great fit for Tascala and for this site in particular, we feel we fit in with what the comprehensive plan recommends, which five to 10 dwelling units per acre, I think Redwood fits what that future land use map calls for. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Todd, our land planner, and talk a little bit about the site plan.
Good evening, everyone, Todd Foley with Pod Design. Glad to be back in front of you, we were here back in June, I think, to kind of present our conceptual, concept for this site, and obviously, we've spent a lot of time going back and taking feedback we received from, from this body, obviously, feedback from the city as well, from staff, and what we are here to talk about tonight is the current result of that. So, you know, with, with the PDD that we're requesting tonight, certainly, there's a, it affords a different level of oversight, as you know, to commitments and ensuring that, you know, what we show and what we design is what we're going to be expected, what Redwood's going to be expected to follow through with if we're fortunate to get to that point. So we felt like that was the appropriate route to go instead of trying to do a straight zoning, and as a result, you know, things like landscaping, architecture, all those kind of elements, we need to, we need to get more specific about. So as, as we mentioned, we're just under that five units to the acre threshold, and when we started looking at the site, really, the, the natural features of the site kind of have guided us into the, the design of the site that we have right now. It's, it's this series of kind of smaller little neighborhoods, if you will, the, the first part is you enter off of Mink Road, before we trip, we cross the existing creek there, you know, gives us kind of our first little pocket neighborhood, and then we're able to cross that creek and, and we kind of come into another little pocket area there that's kind of walled off on the northwest and east by wetlands and natural features and then that creek, and then obviously, the back part of the site kind of allows us to have a kind of a third little neighborhood without really impacting or going back into that back parcel too extensively, you know, as we showed, and I've got another exhibit here, that, that eastern part of the parcel is heavily covered by wetlands and a lot of existing tree canopy, and so portions of that are really undevelopable. And I'll, I'll get into a little bit more about some acreages and quantities so we can better represent what we're impacting from that respect. The, the requirement of open space, I'll talk a bit more about that in a second, but we're about, you know, 16.6 acres of common open space based upon how the code views that. And, yeah, so moving forward to the open spaces to kind of reiterate on that, the wetlands, and I apologize, it's probably a little hard to see, but where we have the kind of intense hatched areas, the eastern part of the site, there's a long linear one that kind of follows that dark dash line, there's a few other smaller, lower quality ones. We've done an environmental assessment of the site, we have not, I don't believe we've started submitting any kind of permits or anything like that yet, but we've done that initial analysis to understand what is on the site. There's about 5.36 acres of wetland that exists on the site currently, and our plan is basically only proposing to impact about 0.19 acres of that. We're able to maintain about five, a little over five acres of wetland, which, you know, we see is, you know, partially a pretty big asset to the site as a natural feature. So, and in doing the site design the way that we have it, roughly 68% of our units directly abut some form of common open space, be it those wetland areas or some of the centralized green spaces that are being created, that's not including units that back up to setback areas and, and the frontage as well. So if you can see, there's little darker hatched buildings on the plan, and those are what's used in that, that calculation. So as I think Jack demonstrated to you, we've, we've gone through and done a conceptual landscape plan, it's not intended to represent necessarily final, we're here obviously to get as much feedback as we can. This is representative of what a current standard for landscaping is for a Redwood site. We always started our front window of the Mink Street with, you know, these kind of large eyebrow-type plant beds that are inclusive of shade trees and ornamental trees, evergreen shrubs, ornamental grasses and perennials. We always are very conscious of trying to maintain a really nice visibility window on the road, something that's pleasing. Those units that are up against Main Street are all front porches, I'll highlight that building here in a second. So we're not backing up units to Main Street, we're trying to create something that is at least in harmony with, you know, the existing residential that you might experience as you go up and down Main Street. The northern property lines, the southern property lines, we tend to gravitate towards more tree-based buffers, things that we can long-term create more canopy in those areas, be it through shade trees and ornamental trees, and then supplementing kind of that low screening area with evergreen trees so that we're getting a balance of, you know, fall color and growth rates and, and all the things that. and all the things that can create more of a naturalized effect through there. Certainly, if it's something that's desired, we're more than willing to continue to look at how we might improve upon that as we move throughout this process here. Street trees along all the internal roads, open spaces will have tree plantings and things like that as well, foundation plantings around the buildings, all things that you would typically anticipate. From a lighting perspective, so certainly, there may be some curiosity about what does a project like what we're presenting here bring from a lighting perspective. Redwood as a whole typically does not utilize streetlights. They like to maintain more of a minimal lighting scale so that we can find ways to better integrate into our surroundings. Every front of the building, every front of the dwelling will have coach lights on either side of the garage, and those are on photo cells. And they're LEDs, so they're high efficiency in that respect. There may be a street light at, say, the mailbox kiosk and some of the higher-traversed kind of community-type spaces. But in general, the street lighting is served by the lighting that's on the front of the garages. So when we think about how we may or potentially could be impacting the surrounding environment, generally, it's a very, very low, almost non-impact from a lighting perspective. So I just want to highlight that for you. And then, before we leave the site, I just want to briefly touch on traffic. Obviously, we know that's a hot topic. There's, not only because of our application here, but there's certainly things we're all aware of more regionally in the area with what Intel is doing to your community and other communities around the area. We have already engaged and are starting through a process of a traffic analysis study. We have done all the initial documentation and studies. We've submitted to the city. The city's traffic consultant has responded back to it. We're not complete with it. That's something we're still working through. Our initial anticipation is, as I think as the staff report mentioned, that there will be some sort of a left-turn movement as you move southbound. We're fully prepared to respond to what that report is requiring. And we've got a little bit more clarity on the comments from the reviewing consultant with respect to the comment that was made about numbers being incorrect. But it sounds like the numbers that we utilize, which is actually, we utilize the ITE manual, which is a pretty standard thing. The reviewing engineer, we just found this out today. The reviewing engineer, they reference a different set of numbers. I'm not the traffic engineer, so I'm only relaying some of this information. So we're working to kind of get clarity on what those specific numbers we need to get cleaned up so we can accurately represent, A, what the study is representing. It was incorrect with the unit count, but we've provided that as well. So our goal is to continue to push that through the process and be able to represent to you what that finding comes about. We know that's going to be of big interest for not only you as a body, but all of our neighbors and the people in the general area. Just highlighting real quick, from an architectural perspective, the exterior and interior of these units. So very high efficient from a construction perspective, two-by-six exterior walls. So they're very energy-efficient. That's a big selling point from the tenants that come in and be a part of these communities. Every unit has, at least from the exterior perspective, personal outdoor patio space, has their own garage. They get to come home when it's pouring down rain. They just went to the grocery, and they pull right in. They close their garage door, and they're able to walk right into their unit. That's a very uncommon thing when you talk about a dwelling that is a rental-type dwelling as opposed to owning a single-family home. So those are all kind of positive things that Redwood offers. The project itself will be presenting four different building types. So we have a variety of architectural elements and elevations to the buildings. That also provides a variety of unit floor plans. There's a lot of diversity and variety from that respect within the project. It's not just one building replicated 30 times throughout the site. So I won't dwell on these too long. Jack presented these. But the one you see on the right, that is the front porch unit. We call that the Haydenwood unit. That's the front of the elevation that would face Mink Street. Front porches, different gable-type roof elevations, all designed to provide and have nods to single-family-style-type architecture along the frontage. The building on the left, and then the next two here, represent the other three building types. Again, all two-car garages that are throughout the project. Varying siding colors, stone kind of water tables, and some different types of siding. Horizontal lap siding and shake accent siding are used. So there's some diversity in the materials as well. To just kind of hit on the idea of the interior as well, the design and the focus of a Redwood unit is really to provide the resident all the creature comforts and feelings of being in a single-family home without the headache and the responsibility that comes with homeownership, be it maintenance on the outside, painting of the buildings, replacing a roof, all those type of things. So what does that mean? It's things like large eating kitchens. It's a walk-in pantry in the kitchen area. It's two bedrooms. There's two full baths. There's an extra den space. So these things, when you are inside of the dwellings, really look and feel and resemble all the different things that a single-family home can offer for those that just choose that rental lifestyle. And so just to kind of summarize, and then we're definitely wanting to get to hear both from you and then obviously, our constituents here in the audience. When we look at the project, and we think that there's a lot of benefits to what this can offer, the biggest one, I think, is that it's a relatively low-density, low-impact development. It's a private-street scenario. So when we look at impact for the city from the maintenance of streets and things like that, that burden doesn't fall on the city at all. That's a Redwood burden that they carry in. So that's a positive. And also, we've been able to preserve a lot of the natural features on the site. And when we look at what the land use map and the comprehensive plan calls for, our uses within that recommendation, that recommendation also allows for other types of uses that certainly could be even more intense on this site. And so we feel that we're a good use in that regard, being single-story. And that's a positive thing as well. That single-story design, while we horizontally are not necessarily the same as a single-family home, the height and some of the features of the architecture are generally more complementary to single-family homes than a traditional apartment complex that might be three-story, like a garden-style unit in that respect. The last comment I'll make is in reference to the staff report. So we've been closely working with staff, with Jack, on all the comments that were provided. We're actively working on how we can rectify some of those comments, provide additional information. We also realize that the intensity of that probably is a little bit inappropriate to really ask you as a commission to make a recommendation on tonight. And so we really, I think, love the opportunity to garner as much feedback as we can tonight, request you to table us so we can go back, provide the staff with a complete application, a better development text that really highlights the standards that have been in the staff report, also any other conditions and things that we might hear from the group tonight, and then come back and be able to present and talk to that effect in the future. So that's really our intent as we're here tonight. We recognize that, and certainly, the application before us and have been a part of other meetings. We understand that we need to get this completely right for you to be able to make a favorable recommendation, or not, whatever your purview is, so we can move forward. So that's kind of where we stand for the evening, and hopefully, that can allow for us to kind of move forward in that respect. We're here for any questions. I'll stop talking so we can hear from everybody else, but really appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk more about this.
Thank you. Don't go far. It's your turn to have questions from us. First of all, thanks for acknowledging that there are some shortcomings in what you've submitted so far and that you're willing to have us table it, because I think that's probably the sentiment of the group.
Sure.
At least, it's kind of picking that up. Saw some nods as you suggested that, so appreciate that.
Jerry.
You're up next, right?
I'm going to talk as long as you did, I think. First of all, thank you guys very much for coming. You do make a nice product. I mean, I will not deny that. I've seen them around the state and around the area. That's where I'll kind of stop there, though. Your landscaping, if I was a resident in the area, I wouldn't want to have to look into other people's backyards and houses. They've been here. They have a right to not have to look right into a whole bunch of apartments. So I think your buffering, you missed greatly. As I said before, if you even go to the cemetery behind the property that you have there, that's still no buffering for the people that have lost loved ones that are sitting there because they're still looking right in, and people are sitting. I don't even see people using those back because I know they got to feel uncomfortable sitting there looking right at people that have loved ones that they're trying to visit in the cemetery. So your buffering is very short of what needs, if anything ever was approved to go in there, your buffering has to get much better. It has to be non-visible. The residents deserve to not have to look into apartments. And if you look at every one of your pictures, in my opinion, every one of these fall way short because alls I see is apartments. Okay, so you're probably going to have to lose some density to do that, and that might be your give-and-take down the road because right now, your density is still too great, and your buffering is too short, my opinion. And I'll just kind of stop right there right now.
Okay, thanks. Stephanie?
Okay, so.
Keep breathing.
So here's my thing. I don't know if I would be comfortable tabling it, and I'll tell you why. Because the intent of tonight's meeting is not to approve or review your designs. Okay, the intent of tonight's meeting is to determine whether or not we can rezone an agricultural piece of property into a residential piece of property. And what I'm seeing in the staff report says that that piece of property is not able to accommodate residential at this time, or maybe not even for years. And so that is my primary concern. The first concern, again, it's water and sewer. You cannot even be accommodated until 2025 at probably the minimum, correct?
That's my understanding.
Right. Secondarily, you've got the wetlands. The property's already flooded. Yes, you could probably make a plan to do something about that, but as the property is not yet, no, you couldn't. And then, thirdly, you're looking at 430 to 460, if we're just going by and playing with some numbers, right, additional cars on a two-lane country road. And if you've ever driven it, then you know that Mink Road Light from Broad and Mink, you're already backed up many times of the day. And I don't know if there's a way feasibly to bypass that particular issue, right? So you've got two very big issues with this piece of property. I'm not against your property. I'm not anything like that. I'm saying that this piece of property that you've chosen cannot accommodate residential at this time, or maybe not even years from now. So for us to rezone an agricultural piece of property into a residential piece of property at this time, to me, is not responsible. So I mean, that's all I have, is just feedback.
Thank you. Great.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm concerned about the density as well. I do appreciate, I guess it would be the eastern part of it. It seemed like you tried to preserve a lot of the trees and stuff over there, so that's good. Yeah, I would agree with Jerry's comments on the buffering. You need a lot more landscaping to kind of help temper people's views there a little bit. Well, you mentioned, I think, earlier, a left turn. Were you referring to that left turn at Mink and Broad?
No. What I was referencing would be in front of our project entry. Right now, the main entry is, I mean, they're both proposed to be full-service, but we would be referring to a southbound movement on Mink Street into our project. Now, again, that's just preliminary findings. There's a lot more detail needs to go into that. And there's a lot bigger discussions that are being had currently. And I think it's important to provide you as much as we can, but there's more information we need to get on that.
Okay.
For you.
This might be more of a question for staff here. Is this residential parent standards apply to this project, or?
It would not.
Yeah, I mean, there's some drainage concerns. Yeah, really, the biggest thing is I think that density needs to come down. There's a couple other factors here when we approve our decision. It's within what the comprehensive plan recommends, but I think there's just other concerns with traffic, the police. Schools aren't so much of an issue because I don't think this is targeted towards schools, and you're not expecting a lot there. But whether that fits the area would be some concern. So I think we need to get the density down in order to, on your next steps there. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Anne?
Yes. All right, when you came in, I believe you said it was June.
I think it was June.
I remember. And I remember discussing that Mink Street, if you travel the entire length of Mink Street from the 161 exit to the railroad tracks, we have residential homes that are well-maintained for the majority. There are a couple there that need some attention. But these homes are owned by people who are proud of their properties. They look like they want to stay in their properties. And nowhere on that road do I see any purpose for changing the... This does not, let me put it this way, this does not look harmonious with the rest of Mink Street. The current zoning is agricultural or R20, which is medium-density residential. So that would be one home per half-acre currently. And you're proposing, so that would be 23 to 24 homes on this entire property. You're proposing about 231 homes. So we're going from 23 homes to 230 homes. I mean, please. We do not see this as an improvement. I don't see that as an improvement to this neighborhood. Our agricultural code, the purpose of our Ag District is to preserve and protect the decreasing amount of prime agricultural land, to preserve and protect open space, wildlife habitat, forestry, water resources, and rural lifestyle. This district also is established to control the indiscriminate infiltration of urban development in agricultural areas which adversely affects agriculture operations. Land within this district shall not be viewed as land waiting to be developed, but instead, land that is currently being used for viable purposes intended by this code. Now, obviously, there are some permitted uses, conditional use. And if we change that to a PDD, as you're requesting, then we have what we see. So I like your properties. I do. I like your lands. I don't think this is the right location. I know our future land use... I know our future land use map... I mean, don't get me started on that whole thing because those are humans doing their best to make plans for the future. And they're not, to my understanding... Maybe I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, Zach or Scott. It's not necessarily legal binding.
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. So we are not bound by the future land use map to approve this. It's a suggestion that I think recommendation is bizarre. Completely bizarre. So this little spot, I don't understand what they were thinking, this little area. I think maybe they were thinking, let it be like some kind of walkable service from Broad Street. Maybe you have some little shopping for all the neighbors. I don't know. But the land itself is so... It needs help. I just don't see it. But this is where I'm, this is my thinking right now. That is all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe? Three words: location, location, location. You know, I, with the properties of 231 homes on that location, that's, I just think it's a little much. I think it needs to be in another location with less amount of properties because I do like Redwood property. I like their properties. I mean, you can't take that from them. They build a good product. I like a good product. But I just think it's in the wrong location. And too many. That's all I have.
Yeah, thanks.
I was just gonna say, when school lets out there at 3 o'clock, traffic is really bad on Mink Street. And when you, if you're with your proposal, it's only gonna make it worse. So, you know, one of the things that we consider is if it's harmonious, and I can't, it's not harmonious in that spot. You also maintain your properties very well, which I respect that, but not in this spot, not in this location. You know, another thing to consider for us is, is this gonna create an excess of additional requirements? I don't know how you build this and not widen Mink Street. I don't know how you do, I don't know how you do it. And I think, you know, as somebody that works with kids, I think about safety of kids. There's a lot of traffic on Mink already, high school kids that are driving that road. You're, you know, when you talk about adding the number of units that you're talking about, I, it, it's not safe there.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions for the applicant at this time? I know that you had mentioned preparing to work on this some more, and, for example, the traffic study that you were doing. What kind of timeframe would you expect if we were to allow it to go forward?
Well, I mean, certainly, we definitely want to hear from the residents as well and make sure we're, but I think we, you know, we're gonna expect some similar comments. But I think, in big picture, where it's actively going on right now, you know, our, candidly, our hope was to maybe try to turn something around so that we could continue to, this discussion potentially in January. Probably might be a little aggressive to consider that, given some of your initial feedback. And, you know, we've been working through the staff comments. We actually have a lot of those things addressed. The traffic thing is unfortunately because it's, it requires connection with Morpsy, requires connection with, you know, with the city and things like that. So I would assume that we should be able to have something finalized here probably within the next week, week and a half at the latest. So we're not talking like months. You know, we think we're gonna have some real feedback. You know, I think one of the other challenges is obviously, what is the long-term impact to Mink Street, whether Redwood's here or not? And that's a whole separate discussion, but I think we're actively, Redwood is actively, I guess, you know, concerned and interested in what that solution's gonna be as well because, you know, they were gonna have, potentially have residents that could be faced with that as well. So, but specific to your question, I mean, we're not just getting started with it. We're very well through the process, and I would expect we're gonna have, you know, something that's got final recommendation from the consultant engineer with the response of all the staff comments here, you know, pretty shortly, pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next we'll open it up for public comment. I know we have a number of speaker request forms. There may be other people who want to come up without it, but I'm going to recommend, because of the size of the crowd and the number of request forms, I'm going to recommend a commission that we adopt their five-minute time limit. And it's not to keep people from talking, it's to make sure that everybody has a reasonable amount of time and not keep us here till midnight when everybody's eyes glaze over.
And the only thing we request is, at the five minutes when the alarm goes off, just finish your thought and then allow someone else to come up with their thought. That's all we ask, that we just don't keep dragging out after the five minutes.
Right. And another suggestion, or actually a request, somebody comes before you and you have the same thought, please don't repeat the entire thing. Use your time wisely. Makes it better for everybody. Does that sound acceptable?
If I could ask, I'd like to ask one last thing, too, since we do have such a great group of people here. I'd like to ask the question, what would they see going in there? Just because it's their, it's their property, it's their, it's their community. I'd like to hear from them what they would see in the... So as you finish, if you would, just tell us what you would like to see go in there.
The procedure on this, we'll start with the speaker request forms. Again, if I mispronounce your name, don't come over and punch me. I'm sorry. Lisa will need to swear you in before you speak and then step forward and use the microphone. Lisa, would you prefer one at a time or two or three?
How would you like all?
Okay.
How many you got?
Oh, we got about 10.
I'd do five and then five.
Yeah. Okay, so James Randy Oliver, Michael Taranto, Rick Knight, Caitlin Wilson, and Danica and Charles O'Neill. Okay, thank you. And if you would, just, even though I read your names, start with your name and address, can you?
My name is James Oliver. I go by Randy. Appreciate your greatest comments that you've said so far about this addition going on into this community. I lived in Blanche addition, which backs up to this location. Lived there over 20 years, bought a house there because of the ruralness of the area. This is not something that I'd like to see in our community or near my neighborhood, to drive by every day or anything like that. It's double the size that he's put in over here on 310. The traffic, once again, is already bad enough on Mink. I mean, like I said, the, to look at it, I feel sorry for the people that get it on Mink Road, let alone from the back of my property, what I'll see. The brain worn off is gonna be a problem. I've lived there, like I said, this long, I know that we have a lot of wetland problems there. The blacktop it and build buildings all over. I don't think that's gonna help the situation at all in this area. How many more kids it'll impact into the school? I think they're off on their number there. The value of my house. I bought a house. I'd like to have other houses beside me. Apartments do not help the value of mine, what I've invested my money over the years, I've worked so hard for. Jerry, I appreciate your, everything you said. That was your comments to him. I really appreciate you. A lot of you get, all said the same thing, but like I said, I was listening to yours the most and trying to write down things in between. You asked for us to make a comment on what we would like to see there. What is on Mink Road? Like I said, anywhere from one acre to five, 10 acre tracts of homes or whatever, if that land was ever split up or something to where a lot of people just have some acreage there. That's what I would see. That's what I always thought it would be turned into, maybe split up. You know, maybe buy it off in small tracts or whatever, that way to where there'd be four or five houses maybe put in there, not 200 and some residents, I should say. And like I said, hopefully you guys won't table it. I'd rather you just deny it and just not have any further more on us seeing anymore of this. Appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate everybody's support here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna use a microphone. I'm Mike Taranto, and on that map there, my house, my property, my wife Kim's back here, buds up to the south side. Yep, you got it right there. We, again, we bought, just like Joan said, because we like the rural atmosphere, but it's close enough to a city. And so we bought it in 2014 and have really enjoyed it until the same property was up for a pot farm, if you guys remember that. Fortunately, that was voted away, and we don't have a pot farm because you might see me skip it in the backyard or something. Traffic is the issue, you know, that's one. I'm susceptible to the train that goes across the front of my property. And so it's gonna stop all traffic there. We'd probably get five to six trains a day. I should say, four during the day, two around 2:00 AM in the morning. So I know that's gonna back it up. You add the 462 cars that could be coming out of this property, not to mention everything that's gonna happen with Intel or Ashley Furniture, Amazon, and whatever the heck their building over there is gonna add to this two-lane road. One thing I didn't hear mentioned is that it's all surrounded by agriculture. And I have guns. And if there's a fox or a coyote, I'm gonna shoot it because they're gonna eat my chickens. I do have family members who will hunt deer. I hear gunshots all the time around the area, so that's a concern, is safety. Okay? Other than that, the creek that's going through it actually starts in my property. So if there's any bass or catfish that go down that creek, I want them to return. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Wilson. I'm the daughter of David and Nancy Ritter. They just sold their house, which is the flag-shaped property on the east side of the rezoning thing, to me and my husband Daniel, like about a year ago. So that way we can raise our family the way that they raised me and my brother in this quiet rural area with wildlife. We also own guns, like the previous guy said. We like to shoot in the back 40, just practice. Then there would be an increase in noise pollution onto our property, light pollution onto our property. Our back window for our bedroom looks straight that way. So I'm sure we'd see all the light coming in that way. There'd be a decrease in the wildlife habitat, taken away from some of that wetland that's back there. And then with the retention ponds, one of the major issues I've noticed with the retention pond that was added to the left side of our property there, it flooded us when that was built. So those two retention ponds would probably flood us again. And then increase in crime with everyone that comes in. And I know you said the background checks are done, but still could be an increase in crime around our properties. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Knight. I live at 6097 Mink Street.
One sec, Rick, I'll get to your stuff here.
And I actually, the document that you guys have is the visual impact assessment that you guys are probably looking at. This one here.
Then you do 60.
All right, so yeah, I actually produced that. I have a degree in architecture. I've been doing architectural renderings for 11 years now. So I'm very aware of exactly what's going in next door because I'm the immediate butter to the north. So yeah, just a couple of things before this. I just want to mention that at your municipal consent meeting, you guys said that you guys contact the neighbors ahead of time and let them know what's going on. You guys asked a few times as well if that would happen, and we had nothing until we got the letter in the mail.
That's true.
That shows a lack of trust and lack of interest in working with us and as a community that you guys so want to be a part of. So I don't appreciate that as well. Another note to bring up is that I saw that there was something in the report that said that you're looking to rezone the parcels within 200 feet of our property. So...
No. No, that's the notification buffer, right? People within that distance have to be notified.
Great, that's good. You know, with that. Let's see. So yeah, and I guess a question for you guys would be, you guys have private roads and it's a private community. So does that mean that like the neighboring community, like us, are not allowed to participate in any of the surrounding amenities or like using bikes and walking through the trails that might happen or anything like that? Is that a possibility for neighboring communities? Or is this essentially like a gated community because it's private and we're not allowed to use any of those features that you guys have?
I'm sorry.
They have amenities.
Keep going. They'll have a chance to answer questions later.
Okay. That left turn lane, that would be a big concern for me because I would have to be crossing that left turn lane to get out of my driveway. And then, yeah, okay, so visual impact study here. So yeah, let's see. So this is just an overview of the aerial, nice farmland. And then this gives you a better idea of the mass and scale of all of those buildings. You know, you can't really understand it from a site plan, but this really kind of brings it to life. So one thing to note, too, is, you know, on this, on this site plan here, they have nice big, big trees, 30, 40-foot canopies here, which if you were to look at any surrounding Redwood community, they are much smaller than that. And so depicted here on this one, they are what they would be when planted. I know they grow, but they grow very slow. Maybe 20 years from now they would get to that size, but it would take a long time. This would be the view from my house, my front porch. I know the mayor really likes to post his porch pics. Well, this is my porch pic. I would be seeing the backside of these apartments and how they, they talk about the attractiveness of their design. This back is flat. I'm seeing six patios with all of the junk. The condensers during the summer would be running nonstop. All of the porch lights would be on and glaring into my property because I've noticed that the specs there are not dark sky compliant. So there's no protection from glare from those light fixtures.
Nope, nope, nope. You've still got a minute ten. You're fine.
This is also the view from across the street from my property. So you would see here, there is an existing tree line there. I do not know what's going to happen with that. If they are going, it's on the property line, so if that comes down, it's gonna be even more visible from this property here. And also, if it's gonna stay, it's gonna really impact the growth rate of any of those trees that they plant along that side because those trees would be shading them and competing for growth. This would be the view from 6150 Mink Street. They're gonna have not a great view and not a great experience because they're gonna have headlights and cars coming and going and shining into their street and from the street into their house. They're also gonna see all the cars that are parked outside of the garages because everyone in an apartment stashes all their storage in the garage and there's no space. We've seen that when we've driven around to the local communities here, the Redwood communities, to check out what this was gonna look like. This would be the view from 6178 Mink Street. You can see that these buildings are massive, 230 feet or more wide. You know, those two runs along Mink Street are very large. And again, here, showing some more along the properties here. Yeah, that'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Kiss please. Thank you, I appreciate it.
My name is Tanika O'Neal and my husband is Charles O'Neals. We just purchased 6065 Mink Street last December. We've been in our house one year. And when this came across our, or the letter came across to us, we were like, there's absolutely no way. There's such a better use of this property. And it's already been mentioned to break it up into large plots. We, it, it, everything about it is a hard no, everything about it. The traffic, the school buses. I do believe that there will be more children than what they anticipate. The train, the, the train already blocks traffic up. I pick my daughter up for work every morning on Cleveland and I drop her off every afternoon. And sometimes I sit at Cleveland to turn left onto Mink up to 10 minutes, waiting for traffic to clear. And that's without a train. I, to turn out of my house in the morning, the traffic is insane to get out of there. I came in today to put in plans for a possible home to be built on this property to tear down the home that we live in now. And I was told that I needed a 50 foot setback on both sides. And these guys are only requesting a 25. So right there to me is kind of not okay at all. It, it just, I just think it, it would look horrible. And I agree with what every one of you said, especially you said it looked bizarre. It was very, very weird. And I did that, I just wanted to make sure my voice was heard. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next group. I'm sorry, on this one, I definitely. Whoever lives at 6108 Mink Street. Caning, I guess.
Gloria.
Gloria. And Scott Cannon. And. Mr. Jones, is it? 14471 Graham. And Scott Webb on Connor Avenue. Was there another one that came in that's all the ones I have?
That's yes.
Okay.
I have one.
Name and address, please.
Sorry?
Name and address.
Oh, Scott Carrick, 6108 Mink Street. I think everything's pretty much been covered by. It's good to know that I'm surrounded by so many concerned residents. It's good to know we have a concerned committee here to address these issues that know what this means. I mean, literally. And the only thing I really have to say other than that is, hi Jerry, it's good to see you. My old classmate graduated the same year. But yeah, that's, just thank you all for, for being realistic about this. Seriously appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gloria Carrick. I don't have a lot to say except my main concern is that we continue to have drainage problems in our entire area. We've actually, Scott and I had to invest over $5,000 this past spring so that we'd have better drainage because it was flooding our shop and our backyard. And I know all of our contiguous neighbors have the same problem. So if something like this is installed, I can't imagine what it would do to the actual surroundings with the flooding if it, when we get hard rains. So that's my main concern. But thank you all for your concern. We've lived there 22 years. We don't want to see 281 apartments, not there anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name's Scott Webb. Live on 33 Con, 331 Connor Avenue, which is the 12 acre parcel that backs directly behind it with the pond. About for the flooding and the timber gets pretty bad. And, and you can see it where they mentioned wetlands anyways. It's, it's a pond swamp. It's hard to, they've covered a lot of items. I guess my big notes that I wrote down, you know, handwritten notes, was maintain the harmonious appearance. And, and when you look at the parcels to the north, those are 10 acre parcels for most of the north. And it runs into five and there's a 34 acre parcel that my, we have 12.2 acres. Below that's 10 acres. The small left one on the bottom, I believe 12 point or 2.2. You look at large parcels, 231 apartments is not by any means harmonious with the surrounding area. Like I said, they've said most things. And if I had to pick something going, I obviously, I'd love that, you know? And farming's a part for the country, really. I mean, but if you're continuing the harmoniousness of the area, 10 acre parcels. I mean, even if it went five, there's a lot of five acre parcels. I mean, the, the ones across the street are .89 on it. There's seven of them and, but 2.2, you're looking at anywhere from one acre parcels to five and a half acre parcels, give or take. But 10 acre parcels fits in. I mean, if it has to change for mag, I'll make it quick. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's John Jones. And although they've taken all the fire from my speech.
How about it?
And all my notes, okay? The, the traffic is just horrible down Mink, you know? And my daughter lives at 6331 Mink. That's my future retirement home. I've already gotten my bedroom picked out. She don't know yet. But everybody has covered just about everything. I mean, there, there's not anything that, you know, the traffic, the schools, the, the, the intel, the traffic. They haven't even started studying from intel. That needs to be a four lane highway down through there. And they're talking about hooking on the, the 70 and Mink. Nobody will write anything down on a pencil or commit to it. But there's, there's so much going on down through there. And I thought the pot farm was going to be a good ideal. Thank you very much for your time. But like, everything's been covered. If, if they're going to build this up on Broad Street, down here on Broad Street or something, we're, we're, you know, there's other places to build this thing. Thank you very much.
Those were all the speaker request forms that we had. Was there anybody else who did not submit a form that really wants to comment? Okay, step forward and. And again, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Rhonda Ray. I live at 6122 Mink Street. This is directly across my front window and my front door. I bought the house in 2009, moved in because only of the area and the rural part, like they had said, yes. Number two, my concern is when they widened our road and put in curbs and all the new stuff, they did take a lot of our front yard. And I, I don't know if I misunderstood this, but somebody I thought said 25 more feet of our yard. I don't know where that came from, but I don't want to lose any more of my yard if they have to widen the road. And eventually I think that intersection will require a traffic light. And I think that's a horrible idea because we have lots and lots of big trucks and semis that go up and down that road 24/7. The noise would be crazy. It's bad enough already. Basically, that's it because everyone else has all, you know, addressed. I have terrible flooding as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let me say something.
Would you like to respond to the couple of questions that came up?
So I, I think, I guess I'll just start from a general perspective. Obviously, both from the commission's comments, you know, residents. I think it's very clear there's, there's a lot of, of issues out there. And, you know, I, I really think where we're at is we would really love the opportunity to dig into some of these more. Realize that some may be more, are more challenging than others. And so, you know, if I mentioned January, I mean, I, if we could table and come back to you in February and at least have an effort to, you know, look at density, look at setbacks, look at, you know, the drainage thing. You know, it's a big issue. And, you know, I, I know what I'm going to get when I say this, but the, the efforts that we will have with our project, it will improve drainage because there is no drainage on the site right now. And so I think there's things that, there's more information that we can offer the group, both residents and, and the commission. I'm not trying to disregard any specific question or comment. I think there's, you know, the traffic, we're still working through that. We have the, the, you know, the leverage of what's, you know, potentially going on, talking with the city about intel impact and all that kind of stuff, which we have no control over. But, you know, we, we at least need to get through that process with our site so that we can accurately, accurately represent what those final impacts might be. So I, I guess that's, that's my, my general response, you know, to the commission is I guess just to believe that we have that ability to come back. We may come back in February and, and, you know, we may not have the minds changed. But I think giving us the opportunity, we've put a lot of time and effort into it and it's not been, you know, within any intention of disregarding or excluding. But, you know, it's clear that we, we have done that to some degree and, and, you know, don't feel comfortable about that. And that's not the, the image and the likeness that we typically want to put out as a potential neighbor. So, you know, definitely want to apologize. It's not our intention at all. So I'm happy to, I guess, respond to any specific things. But I guess what I heard in general really was, you know, setbacks, density, you know, things like lighting and stuff like that. We can, we can definitely provide more substantive information on that. And, you know, I just requested we have that opportunity if it's the purview of, of the commission. So definitely, you know, happy to answer any other questions in that regard. But that's kind of where we stand, so.
Okay. Commission members, I won't go one by one, but if you have any questions, comments at this point for the applicant?
My comments are, you kind of outkicked your coverage on this one. When you first came in, we told you that, you know, cluster, you know, for not that this is a cluster thing, but that was going to be a major issue, you know, that you were going to have issues. You came in with your design as is. And while you took some of our notes, I don't think you took enough of our notes. You know, I appreciate you asking to be tabled, but, you know, you, you had your chance to come in with your plan. And I, I, I feel you missed that, you know, that opportunity.
Thanks. Other comments, questions for the applicant?
I guess I could make a comment. My initial comment in June was that I didn't see this going in here. I didn't see it as an option. Didn't see it as something that would be harmonious with the area. You know, you have every right to purchase a property with a gamble that your plans for rezoning will be approved. But that's a gamble when you purchase a property like this. And so I respect your right to try. And like I said, I like your properties. But I don't think the density would work for profitability for you. I don't think there's any amount of reduction that you could give that would satisfy the needs of the community and still make a profit. Unless you had some kind of mega plan. But I don't, I just, I'm not sure it's worth the time or the effort for you or the residents or the commission or the administration. That's my thought.
Thanks. Other comments?
Again, you got a nice property and you guys, you know, you, you have a nice product.
Yeah.
Just not a good.
So procedurally, if I may, you know, if the, the wish of the commission is to, to not afford a tabling, you are then making a recommendation this evening of denial, correct?
We will vote on it. We, we will vote on.
And we will still move forward to council, obviously with a, a negative recommendation. Yeah, okay. Just wanted to be clear about that. So, I mean, again, I, that is not what we are excited about the prospect of. We definitely want that opportunity. We, we, we have, I personally with Redwood as a consultant, I know they have too worked on very, very challenging sites. And, you know, you may be right. I mean, there may be a solution that we can't get to. But, but we haven't gone to that extent. And I apologize if we haven't, you know, if it's appeared that we haven't taken that effort based on your earlier feedback, that, that first step with the conceptual review, I think was really to try to reintroduce and put our foot in the door with respect to this. We knew that this wasn't going to be, you know, an easy site for all the reasons that we spent time discussing. But I, I think in, in, you know, in land use and zoning and development, you know, these kind of things happen. And, you know, just would really respectfully request that, that opportunity, so.
Well, for me, I wouldn't be comfortable tabling it because I don't think that there's anything that you could deliver that would solve the problems that you've presented. I mean, you've got 2025 before you can even get water and sewer on the property, right? The traffic, it's either widen the road or don't widen the road, right? But either way, that's time, that's money. But that's, you know, so I don't know how you could come up with a viable solution for that very big problem either. And thirdly, you know, we did give you all this feedback in June. And we already knew that this was not going to be a good spot for that. But also, you know, you said you were going to speak to your neighbors and according to your neighbors, you didn't. And so you've lost the community trust as well. So I would just not be, I would not be in favor of tabling this. I'd be, I'm ready to vote.
Thanks.
Do you have another location in mind?
Presently, this is the, the, the location within the city that, that has been targeted. I mean, I have a map of obviously the site on 310. Kind of services that south, southeastern site, you know, for a lot of reasons. And these guys can speak maybe a little bit more to the, the target. But, and there's just a lot of, you know, positive opportunity and growth in this, this part of the community. And, you know, we felt the site was, you know, at, at least in a bubble, was, was good for Redwood. We understand there's unique factors outside of that. If you recall, when we were here back in June, we were also considering that site on Broad Street. We kind of presented two options and, and that site was not, as we went through our due diligence, that site was not an option. So, but presently, no, there's no other sites that we have.
So was that Broad Street site not good for Redwood or not good for our community?
I, I think with the context of what the Broad Street corridor might want to provide, it would be the latter. More that it's to try to take a, an approach with that in that corridor, probably not the most complete plan. The thought here with moving off to Mink is that we can, you know, hopefully find a way to, to integrate into the residential fabric a little bit better, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't have any more. So time for deliberations and I guess I'll start off. I'm, I'm inclined to go with the table option only because if we were to vote on it tonight, whatever we vote on, whatever recommendation we make, it'll go to council in its current state. And we don't know what they'll do. I mean, if they get a super majority, you know, if we were to say not approve it and they find a super majority that would approve it, it'll go exactly as it is. We just, we don't know what council will do. So that's the only reason. I think it's, you're facing a steep uphill battle, maybe like this, to get it through, to make changes enough to make it acceptable. But I'm inclined to say, give them a chance only for that reason. But I'm inclined to say, give them a chance only for that reason.
But going by that logic, even if we do table it, they come back, we still deny it, they're still gonna go to city council with it.
That's true.
We're still running the same risk, the super majority will do it.
Right.
Um, so it's either rip the Band-Aid off now or, or let city council with it. But, I mean, I think that we've made some very strong points.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think they'll find a super majority. And the fact that, when was the last time you saw 11 people in the community show up to speak against something like that? I think that holds a lot of weight for city council. So I don't think that that risk is as large, you know, really, if we just took the vote today.
Okay. Good point. About how much?
About 50/50. Probably maybe a little bit more on what you're saying there is, you know, let's, um, work with them, you know, see what they come back with. Um, but again, it's gonna be a pretty steep uphill battle to try to get this approved, so. Yeah, maybe 51/49 leaning there.
I'm torn on it, I am. Uh, I, I am, and, and you guys know, I'm, I'm always leaning towards giving them an opportunity to, you know, come back with, with another idea. Um, and your thought is very well delivered that you're right, it could go and it, and it could get voted. But Stephanie's right too, even if we, they come back, then it's gonna be half of what it is. And, you know, is that still gonna be enough for this commission?
Right.
I'm probably 51/49 the other way.
But again, there are some very unsolvable issues. The, the traffic is unsolvable unless you widen the road.
Traffic is traffic, though. You gotta understand one thing about traffic. Traffic's not, traffic, you know, again.
But the negative impact to that area is something that has to be considered.
Traffic unfortunate. Traffic's unfortunate because you're 100% right, traffic's an issue, but
Right.
Traffic is one of those, it won't, it's not one of those build it, it's, it is build it and they will come. You can't sit there and wait for the state or the city to widen that road. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. They, they only widen it because of the need, not because vision. They, they don't spend money that way.
Right, I understand how that works, but my point is, why does it need widened right now to accommodate another 430, 460 cars when really the density in that location we've already discussed is not appropriate?
Five or 10 years from now, though, it's gonna be four lines.
And that's fine. And you know what? Let intel play for it. Let somebody, you know what I'm saying? Like that, that's, that's a bridge across, you know, when it's time to cross it. And I just don't think that right now is the time to cross it. And I, and I, so I, I think that currently, right now, that's a mental problem. I think currently, right now, not being able to get access to water and sewer until 2025 is a problem. Um, so these are right now, they could come back in two months with a modified plan, but those are two things that they're just not gonna be able to modify or address or have a solution for. So I feel like we're gonna find ourselves right back here and, and, you know, in a month or two, if we do decide to table it, that would be the only reason I wouldn't. I'm also giving people a chance. I'm just saying, I'm just gonna all for, you know, extending something that we already know, that's probably gonna be the outcome, right? If there was potential to solve those problems, I would say okay. But I don't see the potential to solve those two very large problems. So, that's all.
Well, the, the third problem for me is location, so you can't solve that either. So I want you on that step. And I think I'm ready to vote tonight as well.
Thanks, uncle. Do you wanna ask something else?
We're kind of in deliberation. We apologize, appreciate it, but, you know.
No, I was just gonna, okay, there's a time that's maybe go ahead and tell us what you have something to add, rather than you guys to have. You're correct about that.
Appreciate it, sir. We do, we do greatly appreciate it. Um, I mean, he, here's the thing, we can always make a motion and we can vote it up or vote it down, you know, and then discuss other things, so. I, I think with that being said.
I was just gonna ask for input from the staff.
So what I would do seems to be some discussion on tabling, voting. Because it'd be called a vote, like it's written and you vote and you can't go back to a table. So the first thing would be a recommendation to table it. Have that note. See the, see the results of that. So if it's yes, then it's tabled. If it's a no, it's not tabled and we move on. So that would be our first step and then once we have that decided, we can move on to the next, if necessary.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Then I'll make a recommendation that we table rezoning application ZON dash 22 dash 006 pursuant to section 1255.19 of the Potasko Code.
Do I call, excuse me, do I call a point of order?
I'm sorry.
Can I call a point of order? I'm not sure, because I didn't get to make any comments yet before.
Oh, we were in deliberation.
In deliberation, I was waiting for an opportunity to.
That was, it was open format. I wasn't going around, right?
I know, but I didn't get to, you know, I didn't get to say anything. So may I, before we proceed to table any, or make a decision?
I, I, I will retract that right now, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, concerning the, obviously in addition to the, um, density, the code is, requires us to look at whether or not it's harmonious with the surrounding area. Can a, can an apartment complex like this be harmonious with the surrounding area? Um, obviously the density. And so I wanted to, to put that out there as well as, um, if we, if we did a no vote, um, I do know that city council does heavily rely on a recommendation. So I, I just be aware that they do take into consideration how we interpret the code. So just wanna make, just kind of remind everyone of that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And sorry if you missed the opportunity.
Um, okay, with that, I will again make a motion that we table ZON dash 22 dash 006 pursuant to section 1255 dot 19 of the Potasko Code.
I'll second it.
And Frank seconded, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to table the application. Discussion on the motion. Rule call.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
No.
Ms. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Brooming?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson?
No.
The motion fails.
So it's not tabled. So the next, if you look at for our resolutions, we always make the motion, you per.
Right.
And that way, for approval, the yes is a yes and no is a no.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve rezoning application number ZON dash 22 dash 006 pursuant to section 1255 dot 19 of the Potasko Code with the following mod, with, with the one following modification.
We have a recommendation to approve, or a motion to recommend approval?
Second motion.
Charlie, seconded, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay, proceed with the rule call.
Mr. Brooming?
No.
Ms. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Wilkinson?
No.
Mr. Boggs?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Schurex?
No.
Okay, motion failed and that will be the recommendation passed to city council.
That's correct.
We have some more housekeeping, so you're welcome to stay and watch or you're more than welcome.
Go home and eat your late dinner. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Wait a few minutes for the room to clear and settle down.
I'm gonna grab it.
You never know how, this goes to show, I should've went ahead and made that chicken before I came, because you know my son is, I'm going, mom, I'm starving. He's 18, will not cook for himself. So go through and get something for him.
Okay, we wanna move ahead with our agenda. If you have a conversation, please step outside the room.
Everybody please, if you could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda then, item number six, excuse the absence.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Rick Boggs for November 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the, my absence be excused from November 2nd.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna use first.
Jared moved, Frank seconded.
Thank you.
Discussion, rule call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Brooming?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Abstain.
Ms. Doherty?
Abstain.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, next, uh, a mo, or excuse Stephanie from the meeting on November 2nd.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Stephanie Doherty from the November 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion, rule call.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Abstain.
Mr. Boggs?
Abstain.
Mr. Brooming?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Really? Okay.
Motion passes.
See, I'm not the popular one.
Moving on, um, item number seven, approval of meeting minutes from November 2nd. Everybody have a chance to review and are there any additions, corrections? If not, if not, I'll, I can make a motion to.
Yes, because I don't have one up, so I don't have the dates.
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the November 2nd, 2022 regular meeting be approved as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, session, rule call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Abstain.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Brooming?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Abstain. Motion passes. Item number eight, other business. We have any other business tonight?
No, sir.
No? Thank you. Okay, you know what's next.
I'll make a motion, motion that we adjourn to Wednesday, January 4th, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Frank, rule call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Brooming?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Schurex?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes and we adjourn. Uh, before.